The only thing I'd like to add would be, um...
No hearing, Captain?
...the vacancy.
Come on. Got steady? Bring some stability? It's gone.
What's it doing? My phone's way over here. Oh, I do hear static.
Gone now.
I don't hear anything in there.
Are we good? All right, everybody back on? All right. Welcome, uh, let's wait until... Are we good? All right. Ready? Welcome everyone to the city council meeting for Monday, July 23rd. Uh, if we could have a roll call to establish form, please ma'am.
Terry McClung.
I am here.
Melissa Green.
Here.
Bob Thomas.
Here.
Nikki Snyder.
Here.
Kristy Kendrick.
Here.
And David Mitchell is absent with notice.
A pledge allegiance, please? A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, get a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. additions? Yes, ma'am.
Um, I would like to remove number three under new business, please.
Second.
Okay. Uh, we have a vacancy. David Mitchell has resigned and so we need to get the council to declare that position vacant, uh, which will be a new business, I guess, number four. And also need to defer the, under new business, the quitclaim deeds from the Parks Commission to 813. We don't have all the deeds yet. So... Anybody else have anything? Yes, sir.
Uh, we need to discuss, uh, mayor pro temp and CAPC representative.
That's right. Want to wait until later to do that, or do you want to do that tonight?
I think we could fill those tonight.
Okay. Get a second?
Second.
We need to vote on that? Okay. All those in favor, sing five a saying aye?
I'm sorry, I missed, I missed what it was.
That's adding, uh, a mayor pro temp and filling the CAPC vacancy.
Is that two separate issues?
I think it should be two separate issues.
And the second was...
Mayor pro, uh, the CAPC... Oh, the second was...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Nikki.
What?
All right, let's, uh...
Yes.
Let's have a vote on the mayor pro temp. All those in favor adding that, sing five a saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And adding the CAPC position? All those in favor, sing five a saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Point of order, why are we requiring that when we aren't for the city council vacancy?
Why did we take a vote for any addition to the agenda anyway?
You were one, you were gone.
We went into that, uh, at a council meeting and that was, uh, decided that was the way to handle it.
If that's the case, should we have a vote for the city council vacancy?
And we just did.
Oh. I'm sorry, I missed that.
Uh, all right, anybody else?
Actually, the votes were for, um, the mayor pro temp.
And the CAPC.
But not for the vacancy, which is an additional...
That's under the new bid... Oh, vacancy, okay, you're right. Adding the...
I thought we didn't vote on this.
I can, I can add that. That's mine, not my addition, this is council additions on there, I think.
All right.
All right. Any other? All right, all those in favor of the agenda as amended, sing five a saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Motion to approve the minutes, July 9th. So moved, okay.
Second, I move to give the ordinance at... Oh.
Minutes?
I'm trying to practice.
Oh.
I, I move to accept the minutes.
Second. Terry already moved.
Oh.
Do I have a second?
Seconded. See, he missed him. He's behind.
All right, any additions, corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of the minutes that submitted, sing five a saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm opposed.
Okay. So 4-1?
Yep.
Um... Now, we have an application from Margaret Hayde for the position six on HDC.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments? Hearing none, uh, all those in favor of approving Margaret Hayde for position six of HDC, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Congratulations, Maggie. Uh, we do have some other positions available, uh, the planning commission, hospital commission, and cemetery commission. We actually have two positions vacant on planning and cemetery. And now we have, uh, we got an application for renewal of CAPC, but has that been approved? Do you know, Mr. McClung? For approving Carol Wright?
I believe that it was, I was not at the last meeting, but...
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
We got an application for approval.
There are minutes of that, of the CAPC meeting that are attached to her application in our package, which did approve her.
All right, so get a motion to approve...
I move to approve the reapplication for Carol Manley Wright for CAPC position seven.
Second.
Okay, discussion? All those in favor of approving Carol Wright, sing five a saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That brings us to our public comments. Please hold your comments for three minutes. We have quite a few people here.
Regarding a proposed ordinance that would make it...
Could you state your name and address, please?
Laurel Owen, 30 Council Street. About the ordinance where you can't house a bunch of animals in a house and not live there. Um, you all saw video of the deplorable situation on Council Street two weeks ago. Thank you for inviting me to make a statement regarding a proposed new ordinance. We all agree that citizens should have private property rights. The question is, at what point does local government need to step in to restrict those rights? For most of us, the idea of buying a derelict house and sticking three big dogs in a cage on the front porch without access to the house at first, just in a cage, and leaving them there alone would be unthinkable. I can't imagine doing that. I'm sure nobody here would do that. But what if somebody does? I can tell you that the experience of living on Council Street was heartbreaking and frustrating beginning just before the Memorial Day holiday, when we first noticed the dogs, and lasting until the dogs were finally removed last week. There was a rumor circulating that some crazy lady was mad about the barking, meaning me, and thus all the fuss. No, I'm not that petty. I'm not quick to call the cops about neighbor or dog issues either. Lots of us called the police that first week. Sure, it was the barking. The barking alerted us to the problem. Dogs left in a cage 24/7 with no exercise, cowering in thunderstorms. Human companionship consisted of once a day, hosing down the poop off the porch and feeding and watering, no kind words did I hear. The dogs keened at times, especially the male German Shepherd, who was the most vocal about his predicament. He occasionally beat up the females, they slept and walked in their poop, the smell permeated the street, the flies buzzed. Before the black plastic was put up around the porch, before the place became a fortress with beware of dog signs, we would go up there and offer them treats just to be kind. The plaque, plastic went up before any access to the house was created, before any fan was installed. We were told there would be AC and a doggie door immediately. Indeed, an open window and a hole in the cage allowed access to the house eventually, and a large fan was installed on the porch, but there was never AC. The situation was heartbreaking and frustrating because it was completely legal. We had no recourse. A noise ordinance was our only line of defense on a street with poop, flies, and neglected dogs in distress behind black plastic and 90-degree heat. Owner not present, all legal, except the barking. I mean, that was the only illegal thing. An ordinance that would prevent people from housing animals and not living with them would take care of a lot of this. It's harder to neglect and ignore close up. If a person lives with their animals, they see, smell, hear, and experience. My hope is that this new ordinance will pass and will help encourage proper care of sentient beings. I hope too, these animals will actually be walked across wherever they are now. And I'm done. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Harry Meyer, I live up on Cross Street and I come to town down Council Street, right past the house that was used as a kennel. And I can tell you that every, every time I came by, these dogs barked. It got a little better when Animal Control told the man to put a tarp in front of the porch. The tarp is still there. I mean, this is a historic district and there's this black tarp shrouding in front of this house that's supposed to be historical. But the stink was just horrible. You could smell it from almost 100 yards down the street. And he had this big fan blowing from one end that blew it right at Mark Mett Miller's house. I mean, we could have somebody move into a house and do that same thing while they're living there, I suppose, so just being unoccupied, I don't think would help. I think maybe the, something about the smell, it's something about putting a tarp in front of your home and blocking visibility of the entire house. Whatever, please, think it over, think, something that can be done, because that was just disgusting. Thank you.
Roger Sinski, 46 Hillside. Uh, the first ordinance on the agenda tonight has to do with the notice and hearing requirements when items are sent over by planning, in other words, plans and all ordinance. The city ordinance speaks in terms of all plans and all ordinances proposed by planning require both publication and a public hearing at planning. Now, there is a change to that ordinance. Now, notice they use the words "all." I think "all" means what it says, all-inclusive. All plans, all ordinances require that. And yet, language has been stuck in the proposed amended ordinance, which seems to me to be words of limitation. Now, the problem is, this, the original ordinance, as is now written, it was copied verbatim from a state statute. You cannot conflict or pass anything which conflicts with the state law. And giving an example is, the city of Cabot, and I brought this example up before, remember when you folks voted to grant the CUP after the denial from the Board of Zoning Adjustment? And you heard the hearing, even though the statute read that appeals go to the court of appropriate jurisdiction. Well, the city of Cabot got around that, they cast a local ordinance and say, gee, that's great, goes, what we're gonna do is, we're gonna put in the city code that you could hear the appeals, appeals could go to either or city council or the court. Well, guess what happened? They got an opinion from the Attorney General, he says, no, 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 you can't do that because it contravenes the state-enabling statute. And I think you should get an opinion at least from the Attorney General's office regard to that. And then, so there was a mistake on, in that regard. Then the other problem I have is with the, you know, with, remember when planning also with the Bridgeford House, after the Feldmans decided to walk away from the property? Remember, that brought into play the 180-foot rule? And what planning did was, they accepted, basically, it was the voluntary giving up the property and bankruptcy, and it went to the bank, and you said, okay, we're gonna continue, we're not gonna revoke the CUP, we'll let the new owner come in, we'll make an exception to the 180-day rule. And the reason I bring up the 180-day rule is because they basically rewrote the ordinance. So here we have two mistakes. The reason I'm talking about mistakes is because if a bed and breakfast owner makes a mistake and it goes in front of planning, it's a one-strike and you're out deal. In other words, if planning thinks you made a mistake and they say you made a mistake, your CUP is revoked. There's no notice beforehand to correct the violation as other cities like Fayetteville have done. That's why I gave you the Fayetteville ordinance, which, as is most cities, they emphasize voluntary compliance or get you to comply before punishment. And I think that's what the theme of the Fayetteville ordinance is, and I ask you for the third time to please look at it, and other ordinances basically say the identical thing. Give the person a warning first, if they don't comply with the warning, then have a revocation hearing. It makes a lot more sense, saves a lot of time and effort. That's it, thank you very much.
I disagree with those who believe that the public was afforded an opportunity to discuss and comment on the ordinances proposed by planning. Last year, I attended several planning commission meetings and spoke my three minutes. I also attended the workshop at which the council discussed ordinances and revisions. The problem being that the public is not allowed to speak at the workshops and the permitted three minutes to speak is simply inadequate when addressing, when having to address several ordinance changes. I was told by a planning member that the municipal league told them that they could not discuss proposed ordinances with the public. Anyone that's familiar with FOIA will tell you that open meeting requirements apply to meetings between members of a governing body with the ultimate decision-making authority. Nothing in the law prevents members of the public from meeting privately with individual members of a governing body. If that were true, it would put every lobbyist in the state out of business. Please read the Attorney General's opinion, opinion number 2003-170. The open meeting requirement does not apply to advisory bodies unless the recommendations are simply rubber stamped by a governing body. When planning proposes an ordinance to council, it is acting as an advisory body. Council does not rubber stamp ordinances proposed by planning. That being the case, it would appear that even at a private meeting between members of the planning commission would not violate the law because planning does not have the final decision-making authority over ordinances. Now, look, what has happened? The agenda is filled with proposed ordinances, the result being that it's impossible to comment on what is being voted on because the public is limited to three minutes. The public should be afforded a reasonable opportunity to comment on each and every ordinance. Eureka should do what other cities have done, allow the public to comment on each ordinance separately in order as they are taken up, and if needed, limit the time to two minutes. Thank you so much.
Yes. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Madam's Clerk, my name's Ken Ponell. It's good to see a lot of you again. Uh, I'm here tonight to throw my name in the hat again, for some reason, for the final four months of Mr. Mitchell's term. I feel like that I could basically hit the ground running with a little bit of catching up and hopefully, whenever the time comes, I'll get adequate consideration. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Susan Porter, I live at 38 Pine Street. And first of all, once again, I appreciate all that you all do, I know it takes a lot of time and a lot of headaches. I'm here just to talk about something again that I think is endangering our community, which is the proliferation of short-term lodging in residential areas. I think there's, um, many arguments to be made on why this shouldn't be allowed to happen, but tonight I'm gonna talk about zoning and privilege surrounding that. Zoning was established to create a healthy community, so there's a good balance of commercial and residential. I'm not sure when, um, the cup was created to allow short-term lodging in residential areas or why, but I think that we have plenty of tourist beds, I think we don't have enough affordable housing. So I don't know why we're allowing cups, um, as far as the privilege part of it. I would think this puts you in an uncomfortable position. You have to pick and choose who you're going to allow to have a cup and who you're not. As far as privilege, it is definitely a privilege when you have a cup. It means if you move in next door to me, I can't use my house for residential lodging and anyone else within that area. I think a cup should be reserved for the greater good of the community, not for someone who wants to come in and start a commercial business, um, in a residential area. Again, I think if we had a shortage of tourist beds, I think that would be a good reason. So, basically, I'm just saying, please, I don't know what it would take to get rid of that ordinance or amendment or whatever, I think it's a bad thing. And I know planning addressed it and did changes on the regulations, the 180-day rule, the 200-foot rule and all that, but I just think it needs to be done away with entirely, so, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, my name's Dave Galley, I live at 104, 105 Jordan, I have a bed and breakfast, so some of the proposed ordinances and the changes have concerns for me. First of all, I kinda disagree with the speaker that, you know, Susan, right before me, it's just, people like myself came into the community and they bought bed and breakfast specifically so they could run them and earn a living, pay taxes, and be a valued member of the community, so, uh, I kinda disagree with what you're saying. Just a blanket ban of, you know, tourist housing is probably not appropriate in this case. I have a, two or three things that I would like the council to consider as they vote on these ordinances and changes. First of all, the, are the existing rules adequate and are they being enforced? If you can consider that, it goes into the next statement I have. I learned this as a young engineer and a manager, as in my work life, is always wanting to go out and do things and engineer and do things like that. But I was mentored by sage individuals who told me, basically, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. So I trust that the council will consider that. Also, we trust that you know what you're changing and why you're changing it, and you've considered, uh, what it will do to fix the problem you're trying to fix. We also trust that you include in your consideration any potential for unintended consequences. You know, we don't want you shooting yourself in the foot because of something that you didn't intend to do and got passed anyhow. And, you know, basically, that's the four points that I really wanted to make, and I wanted to thank you all for your service, and thanks again for allowing me to speak again.
I'm not sure whose signature this is, so I can't read it. So if you signed up, um, this is the last... Barbara, come up to the last one? It is, it is. Thanks, I couldn't read it, I apologize. Signature's getting worse than my blood pressure's getting higher. Relax. Okay, let's see. First of all, first of all, addressing one of the people who spoke...
Name, name and address.
This is Barb Gavron, I have been here 34 years in Eureka Springs.
You're good.
And I have a business here, I have a bed and breakfast on a street that was not paved when I got there, there were, no houses renovated, it was partially paved, and it had all old cars, and it was a mess, okay? So was the historic loop, from Hartstone being a rental slum property all the way to the Crescent, there were very few, maybe half a dozen properties that looked good. So who came in and did this? The Inns came in, they invested their money, they fixed our town. Now, everybody wants a cute house, and they say, well, I want that one, let's put, make it an apartment, or low-rent apartment. So, you know, Santa Fe, all these other towns, you can't afford to live in the historic district anymore, that's just too bad. There are other places to live. You can still visit the historic district, but we're expanding, and there are low-income places in town. I know of things like, I have an apartment for $4.95 furnished with all bills paid. It's been that way for 30 years. So there are things, you just have to know who to talk to, okay? So, another point I wanted to make was, I was really shocked watching the planning commission disrespect Glenna. Glenna has been around for a long time. How long has she worked for city council? She's been here a long time, and she knows a lot. And she actually opened her mouth and said something about the 200-foot rule, and they just ignored her. It's like the wise sage being ignored. So I wasn't real happy about that, and, um, I think everybody should look at that. The other thing I want to know about is, what kind of regulations do we have on the books, in print, about, I keep hearing that you're not supposed to talk to each other if you're discussing, like council members? I don't know what that is. I don't know what that is. What do we have on the books, Butch, about people talking about things that are actually active, from like between planning and city council, within city council to city council members? What is that?
That's freedom of information. We can't talk about it without precedent there.
Really? It's not in the books, like a rule, a regulation?
She wants that word. Open meeting.
The open meetings.
It's a regulation, I think.
It is open meetings, state law.
She wants to know what the word is if we talk to each other. Ex parte.
What is that?
Ex parte.
Oh, no, and then I want to know, what does it say? What are the rules about that? We don't know.
We know. This isn't a point of discussion between the two right now. This is public comments. Come into my office.
I would like to know what that is, okay? And I think my last statement is that Eureka Springs has always been a tourist town. It has always had lodging on every single street in this town. I dare you to go up and down one and find one that does not have an old hotel or a boarding house or something, okay? That's what our town is. This is not suburbia, and we need to get used to it. The commercialism of B&Bs in residential area are not hurting anything. They're improving it.
Is that it? All right. That concludes the public comments, everyone. So our first order of business will be the unfinished business on ordinance 2269, amendment of adoption, amending adoption of plans for the third reading.
Motion to discuss. Second.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
I would like to address the unfortunate events of the last city council meeting in which certain members of the public, without any basis in fact or law, accused city council members of conflicts of interest, and in which a certain city council member inaccurately summarized the city attorney's comments concerning conflicts of interest and led other city council members and the public to believe that such conflicts...
Ms. Kendrick, is this regarding the ordinance amending Title 13?
It is.
And the point is?
People have discussed that city council members have conflicts of interest in considering these particular ordinances.
It's funny, we passed this one.
Please.
And I wanted to address whether city council members have conflicts of interest in considering these ordinances that are before the city council.
I think we've already discussed that. If you want to pertain your comments to this ordinance, that's a separate issue.
There are no conflicts of interest.
Okay. Do you have any, anybody else have comment on this ordinance, 2269? Mr. Thomas?
I'd just like to hear what the attorney has to say with regards to the state statute and this being in conflict with that, that was brought up in public comments.
I'm not sure. Barb, what would your picture question?
It was brought up in public comments that this adoption of plans statement as proposed was in conflict with state law, and I'm asking for the city attorney's opinion on that.
My opinion is not in conflict. Otherwise, I would not have drafted it and give it to you.
Ms. McClung, did you have a comment?
Well, I'm sorry. I'm just not as prepared as I'd like to have been based on my absence last time. And is it difficult to ask the clerk to tell me what the difference is in this paragraph and what it originally was? I mean, is it, might be something. I think so.
Hi, Ken.
What is, we're changing one paragraph, and apparently that paragraph has just some slight wording changes.
May I answer your question?
Madam Clerk, go ahead.
I have kept each of the subsequent versions of each one of these as the process has gone through, and the first one you're looking at, which became 2269, was, it was one that had no changes. So what planning sent, oh, that's not true. The page number was taken off. In the original version, it talks about a page number in the code book, and that came out, and that's the only thing on 2269 from the original submission that changed.
And Mr. McClung, in answer to your question, there was two items that they were changing on this from what's in there existing right now. One is under the adoption of plans. The original said, "All plans, recommended ordinance and regulations shall be adopted through the following procedures." They added pertaining to the land use plan, the community facilities plan, the master street plan, and other plans as significant to the health, safety, and general welfare of the city of Eureka Springs. That was added.
So, I mean, it sounds like those all fall under all plans, don't they?
Yeah. I mean, they were clarifying what plans, they were adoption of what plans, and they were trying to get a little bit more specific.
Okay. Is that all the plans, or is there any other plans that they left out? Because they got, apparently they tried to cover all plans originally, and now they're saying all plans, but being specific to the plans that they stated, so...
The chairman is here somewhere. I saw, there she is. I knew I saw you.
And I misunderstood your question, sorry.
Thank you, and it's all right.
I didn't bring that ordinance with me that pertains to this, and one of the reasons that we changed this was in order that we would not have to do public hearing when we want to make changes to certain codes. We just bring those suggestions to the city council, but in the current ordinance that we have, I think if you go to page two or three, it discusses that it excludes zoning. So this would be, this would just exclude us when we want to bring changes of code to the city council, have our workshops, that we would not have to go through a public hearing.
Ms. McClung?
Should there not be a public hearing at some time for zoning changes? I mean, I think that...
But we're not changing zoning.
That's what you were just stating, that...
No, when I'm talking about zoning, I'm talking, I'm not talking about zoning from C1 to C3. I'm talking about the ordinances in that we've been working on. We did a public hearing, no one showed up. And it was made a big deal that we had to do a public hearing, so we went through the process, we did all that, and then nobody showed up for it.
Right. You know, that's just part of the deal.
Right.
That happens a lot in government, I'm sorry to say. It does, it happens that way for the city council and for the CAPC and things that we would wish that the town would take a more active involvement in it, but it just, you know, sometimes it doesn't happen that way. But I don't think that we should be eliminating anything in the process. That's personal.
Any other comments? Is there a motion to approve this ordinance 2269?
I move to suspend the rules and place ordinance 2269 on its third reading by title only.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes.
Ms. Kendrick?
We're voting on to...
Oh, I thought you just said discussion.
Now, we've already had, we're suspending discussion and vote, suspending, this is approval of the ordinance by title only.
Okay, well, if you're asking for my vote, the answer is no. That's not, the mayor had used the word discussion, and so, no.
The motion was to suspend the rules and leave the ordinance by title only.
And, okay.
And your vote is no?
My vote is no.
Ms. Kendrick?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Court one. Ordinance 2269, an ordinance amending Title 13 of the Eureka Springs Municipal Code regarding adoption of plans.
Okay, get a motion to approve.
I make a motion that we approve the third reading of ordinance 2269.
Our third and final reading.
After the third and final reading.
All right, discussion? Mr. Thomas?
I'd like to ask Ann another question, if I could. Other than avoiding public hearings, is there any other reason for this change that you suggested?
What we did is we clarified it. The current language says, "Adoption of plans, all plans, recommended ordinances and regulations shall be adopted through the following procedure." I do not have the procedure. What we propose is adoption, all plans, recommended ordinances and regulations pertaining to the land use plan, the community facilities plan, the master street plan, and other plans as are significant to the health, safety, and general welfare of the city of Eureka Springs, shall be adopted through the following procedure. We just clarified what we felt that that meant.
So you didn't reduce the number of public hearings that would be required?
No, we haven't done anything like that, but this, and I wish that I had the other zoning, and if you want to postpone this for me to get that, I will, because I did read that at a meeting.
Do you have it?
I mean, I don't have it with me tonight. Do you have it?
Ms. Kendrick?
Yes. I think that this particular ordinance does not reduce the number of hearings. Perhaps it actually increases it. The original, the original language in the ordinance says, "All plans, recommended ordinances and regulations shall be adopted through the following procedure," which goes on to talk about a public hearing and going to city council, a long, long, long list of procedures. All that was added here is it clarified that these plans, recommended ordinances and regulations included those pertaining to the land use plan, community facilities plan, the master street plan, and other plans. So it was specific, not exclusive, but I mean, it named some examples of plans that would be adopted through this procedure, whereas the, originally it did not do that. So this is just giving some examples of plans that are to be, are to follow this procedure, but, I mean, A, right after this says, "The Planning Commission shall hold a public hearing." So this is not reducing public hearings.
No, but there is a, there is a, the part of that ordinance, if you go all the way down through that, and we don't need to discuss that tonight, but from what you're saying, no, this does not take away the public hearing. It just makes it more thorough.
Ms. McClung?
But just a little bit ago, you said it did.
I did, and that, I think, was the intent when we did this, and I wish that I had the full ordinance with me, because it's not in the code book, and I don't have it. And I read it here once before when we had this discussion. When you go to the very end of it, there is a part of that, it excludes you from the public hearings. I don't mind having public hearings, I know the Planning Commission doesn't.
Do you mean ordinance, or do you mean code?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would suggest that we postpone this at least until the next meeting, until everyone is on the same page, it has a comprehensive understanding and on the same footing, because I don't think we are right now.
And I kind of agree with that, and I'll be happy to forward that to everybody so that they can look at it.
If you want to make a motion to defer this to the next meeting, let's...
Yes, I would like to make a motion to defer it to the next meeting.
Let's get this out of here.
Okay. And a motion to defer to the next meeting? Any discussion?
I second you.
Okay. Go ahead. All those in favor, seeing if they're saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
You need to go through Ann.
Oh. Vote call?
Yep.
Defer is unusual.
All right, and we need a roll call. Vote, voice vote inadequate. So, roll call vote.
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Kendrick?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Five zero.
Okay. I will bring this up to the next ordinance, ordinance number 2270, amending R1 Victorian Residential with the planning amendments. Get a motion to approve or read. Which one?
I make a motion to give you, to read ordinance 2270.
By title only?
I'm sorry, by title only. Have, no. Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, no. We haven't approved it yet, we kept deferring it, so I don't know how to word that.
May I have a motion? I would like to make a motion to discuss.
Right, that's what I want to do.
Okay, make a motion to discuss ordinance 2270.
Second.
All right. Ms. Kendrick?
I object to this ordinance 2270 for almost exactly the same reason I objected to it before in the last meeting. It addresses more than one subject. It addresses cups, it addresses expanding the cups that are permitted, and it addresses the domicile occupancy registration, whatever, of bed and breakfast. So it addresses three different subjects, and only one subject should be in each ordinance. That's number one. Number two, I object to adding tour homes as yet another conditional use that is permitted in the residential districts. And thirdly, I don't think the word occupy is really any, I mean, I was confused last time by the word register, so they took out that whole phrase, and I think occupy is not a very good term either. I think it would be much better if we used residency or domicile, which have legal meanings. So I don't think that that is well drafted. So for those three reasons, the more than one subject, the tour homes being added, and occupy, I am against this ordinance.
Ms. Snyder?
I have on my copy, I've crossed out the word occupy and put reside at the premises, since we do have, we can be in a building next to it. But my question is to Ann, have you had the workshop yet, the workshop in regards to these ordinances? Has there been time for that?
No, we didn't do a workshop. We've had three workshops, and we had one workshop with you all. We've been working on this for two years.
Okay, now remember, at the last meeting, I had suggested...
I did.
...a workshop with no time limit, so everybody can sit at the table and discuss together and openly.
No, we haven't done another workshop, and I don't think the Planning Commission is going to approve another workshop. We've worked on this for over two years.
Right.
And we keep coming back to you, and I'm okay that you don't want to pass this, but I think from the Planning Commission, tell us what it is you want, and we'll put it in there. But don't keep sending us back to guess how you want this to read.
See, that's the point I'm trying to bring up in regards to, if you all hold a workshop, and like I said last time, you've got their attention now, if you hold the workshop with no time limits, so each person can sit at the table and say, "I want to restrict B&Bs because of, I do not want to because of," so you can come and get the idea and the feelings of the residents, of the people, that we don't know how to act...
But we did that. We have been working on the same thing for two years.
Right, but you also had a three-minute time limit the whole time.
Not at our workshops, we did not. Everybody had an opportunity to say whatever they wanted to say.
Okay, I was of the understanding from ages ago that that sort of...
Absolutely not. Everyone had an opportunity, there was no three-minute time limit.
Okay. How can it be worked out that the residents can contact y'all either by an email or whatever, because, yeah, I know workshops can be a pain, but, you know, email is something so they can give their opinion, because there is a lot of misunderstanding, shall we say?
There's a lot of false inform... There's a lot of false information out there, I agree.
Yes, causing severe misunderstanding. And I'm trying, I've been trying to figure out for eons now, how can we get the people together so everybody can understand what the goal is and why?
They can send an email to Glenn, and she will send it out to the commission. That's what she does with everybody that sends it in, we get it.
I just, it, there's, like, there's so much conflict going on with the people because of the misunderstanding, and I don't know what to do.
It is unfortunate, and I don't know what, any of what we're doing has an effect on anyone that's currently in business.
Yeah. I just, you know, I, I think I've lived here too long. I really do, because I know what it was like. And, yeah, these B and Bs and stuff, this is what made town. And people who are getting places now, they aren't getting them to make them into affordable housing, they're getting to either live in, or do an Airbnb, or whatever. And so we've got people fighting back and forth, and I've never seen that before. I have never seen our lodging community battle it out like it's going on now. We've got to try to do something.
Well, I know that since I've been on the commission, I think there have not been any new CUPs. There have been transfer of CUPs because the property is sold. So as far as new ones go, um-
I think we've lost a lot.
All right, let's carry it. Ms. Green?
Just what Ann said, we worked on this for two years. We had one public hearing, two meetings, that the public was there for. We worked on it for like eight months. Um, the only thing I've seen, nothing is, is changing for any existing. What we cleaned up, or what they cleaned up, I wasn't part of this, is they took the off, the site out of there, meaning, if you have guests, you're onsite. So that means, if you're the only single innkeeper, you're never supposed to leave there if you have a guest there. So they, they changed it to just reside on premise, which is the intent of the law, or reside adjacent. And, so I, I don't see, and the 200-foot rule hasn't changed either. So there hasn't really been any change. Um, I agree with Christie. I think that tour homes, if we keep it or don't keep it, should be on a separate ordinance.
Well, I, I will say this on the tour home. I was unaware, um, that we do have a tour home. Apparently somewhere down the road, a CUP was given. Um, and I think the feeling was to put this in, since we had the other one, but of course it opens the door for more people wanting to do CUPs.
So that means-
For tour homes.
Yes. So that means that we issued a CUP inaccurately, and because at one point in time, we issued a CUP inaccurately-
I don't think, I don't think that's true. I think, and I think what you're talking about is, is the one tour house we've got, has got, is legally, legally, that-
Now, why is, give me, if, I'm, I'm sorry, I was just gathered, why do we have a tour home in a residential area?
I, I do know, I do not know when it was issued. I haven't, I just found out about it. I do not know.
The tour home was there, has been there for years, Christie.
Just because it's there doesn't mean we need more.
No, but it's had its CUP there for a long, long time. But why it was issued, I have no idea. But the fact is, it was issued, and it's there legally.
Okay. But it doesn't mean that we need more.
Oh. There's an info in the corner of the room, if you would recognize her.
Anybody else?
Back there.
Wait a second. Point of order?
No.
I would object to our communicating with the audience.
Well, we're not communicating with you right now.
I'm sorry, I-
We can recognize any time it's needed.
All right. Just get, any further discussion on this?
Which?
Yes, sir.
I may have misunderstood, Ms. Green. You said there was no change to the 200-foot rule?
No, there, there isn't. Um, not, not, okay. The 200-foot rule on this one, okay, I misspoke. There's no change in, in the new codes on how any existing B and B gets transferred their cup. It, it did change, you are correct, it did change on here to, if you had a like or same, you went by the street footage. If you didn't, you wanted a CUP, let's say for a massage parlor, and there was none on the frontage roads within 200 feet, then you went back to a radius.
Why?
It's always been like that.
It doesn't, I don't see that in the original.
Okay, if you get, I've got it.
Uh-
But the first question I wanted to answer, it's the Rosalie House, and it's had it for 35 years, I believe.
It's about right.
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion?
Just the point that the Rosalie was a tour home before I moved here forty-seven years ago.
So we can, we can, I'll take it back to planning to take out the tour homes.
Does the council want the tour homes taken out?
I would like to vote on it as it exists.
As it, you want to leave it as it exists?
Let's vote on it. It will either, it'll either pass or it'll fail. Let's, let's move forward.
All right, it, uh-
There has been no motion so far.
Okay, do I have a motion to, uh, read ordinance 2270, 79?
2270?
72, 2270 by title only?
Well, there have been some amendments.
Okay. Uh, how do we do that, Mr. Weaver?
Well, actually, actually, there have been amendments until a council member proposes those amendments. I understand that the planning commission has recommended certain things be removed or changed, but at this point, no one has moved to amend what was originally drafted.
That's true.
So if someone wants to make those amendments, now would be an appropriate time.
Okay. Yes, Mickey?
I make a motion that we amend paragraph, new paragraph C, remove the word occupy, and instead write reside at. So it would read, "Or resident manager shall reside at the premises." I'll second that.
Okay, got any discussion on that? You want, yes?
Yes, I do have a comment. Um, residence is a, as the city attorney can attest, um, can, you, a person can have several residences legally at the same time. And so, um, if, if you're going to, um, so amend the, that wording, I would rather say reside permanently and full-time, um, so that we don't have people who live, who reside at this six months of the year, and reside in Florida the other six months.
But they could have a resident manager there.
Well, then you need somebody residing, how about residing? Then, then let's amend it to say reside at all times.
It says the owner or resident manager.
Shall reside at all times.
Shall reside at the presence, premise, okay.
So I would make a motion to amend the amendment-
He's got a motion.
-to add the words "at all times."
Do I have a second?
I'm seconding.
We were saying, she's got a motion to reside at all times.
We already got a motion on the floor.
Yeah, well, we got, we've already changed once. Ms. Weaver?
So there was no second?
When you use the word reside, you are creating trouble. And if you tell someone that they have to reside there all the time, you're probably in violation of federal law, which allows them to maintain residence in more than one location, including more than one state.
And also, does that mean 24/7?
Well, no, it doesn't have to mean 24/7. I don't, I don't have a good word for you, that's why the word occupy is in there. Occupy is the closest I can come to establishing it without coming into conflict with either federal bankruptcy law, or federal homestead laws, or state homestead laws.
Ms. Green?
Um, would it be better if we just left it as it is, and they have to be onsite when they have guests there? Tim, I'm asking you.
Well, I don't know how, how do you want, you want to leave the word occupy, or you want to change it to something else that says all of what you just said?
Well, let me ask this question. I was always under the impression that a bed and breakfast was a home-based business with an occupant in it, running it. I, I don't know if it's a manager or owner, but that someone is living there and running it. That, that's what I was always led to believe.
Isn't that what it states now?
Yep.
Um, kinda.
Kinda. Kinda not.
Aye.
I'm trying to find out, Mr. McClung.
Do you want me to read the, the original one, Mr. McClung?
Would you, do you have it in front of you?
I do.
I've already made my mind up, so you, you can read it for your own benefit if you want.
Okay. Well, no, I just asked if you wanted it, I've got it.
All right.
Do you have the definition of bed and breakfast?
Mm-hmm.
The old one? No, I mean what's in code.
Yeah, it's, it's-
I'm looking right at it, if you want it.
Okay, go ahead, yeah. Please read it.
A dwelling or area containing, bed and breakfast, a dwelling or area containing one or more structures, at least one of which is occupied by an owner or manager onsite, where, for compensation, lodging and meals are provided, generally no longer than 30 days per guest, but not more than five units. For the purpose of this section, onsite shall be defined as adjoining, i.e., sharing a boundary, and shall not include properties separated by a city street, roadway, green space, or alley. And that's of, as of, uh, 2012. Ordinance number 2163. So the reference to being present when there are guests, I, I haven't ever read that specific phrase in this book.
I thought you and I had discussed that amendment, that's, that's-
Doesn't that cover it?
Yeah, so why are we doing it?
I mean, is it, doesn't that say what this says, basically? Really?
I think it's very close.
Okay. What's been the point?
We have had one court case in the last nineteen years that I'm aware of, where we got in an argument over what the word occupy means in this reference, because it was over whether it was a bed and breakfast, or whether it was tourist lodging. And the judge decided that this was appropriate at that time, and convicted the individual of using, not living there.
All right, so, where's, where are we with the motion? Do we have a motion and a second?
Uh, there was Ms. Snyder's original motion to amend by taking out occupy and putting in reside at. There was Ms. Kendrick's motion.
Do we have a second on her?
Uh, I believe we did. Yeah, I seconded.
Okay.
And then, there was an amendment that I did not hear, I got a, got a second, then another amendment that I did not hear, got a second.
All right. So presently, we've got a motion and a second, that the resident manager shall reside at.
How about reside in?
Reside in, reside at the presence.
It's got to be at, because it can be next door.
All right.
Okay.
Any further discussion on that? Okay, let's have a, all those in favor of making that amendment signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Oh.
No.
No.
Okay.
Yes.
Any other changes that y'all want to make on this amendment? Do you want to keep the, uh, let's see.
I've held my hand up for ten minutes.
Yes, ma'am.
But the clerk read, if that's what we already have, why are we changing it? Why are we even dealing with this new paragraph thingy? What did I miss? That's, that's a question I, you know, need an answer here.
Ann, you want to come up and tell us what the planning commission was going through?
Well, what I can say is that when I got on the planning commission, I think it's been two years ago, um, it was my understanding that the city council had made some requests of the planning commission to go in and shore up the codes, of which they did. And all these codes of which we've done here, you all presented a copy of these a year ago when we had our workshop. Some of them, I think, we need to update, especially the PED. Um, I'm not going to sit here and pretend that I know why a lot of these were done, because I don't. Um, they, we've worked hard on it, and, you know, if you choose to leave it as it is, then we'll leave it as it is.
Uh, now, in this one, are we changing the 200-foot rule?
No.
No. So there's basically no changes? Have we got any changes?
I do not have, I did not bring my book. Do you have the?
Um, okay, what, what we changed, and Bob was correct, the, the 200-foot rule, okay, here it is. No conditional use permit shall be granted if the property line of, of the property upon which use will be carried out is within 200 feet in any direction on the primary footage streets of the property line, where an existing conditional use or legal non-conforming use is offered the same or similar services. That's where the street frontage came in. It was if you had a B and B 50 feet away. This was the part of the code we used for that. The rest of them, we used the 200-foot radius. If you wanted a B and B, and there wasn't one within 200 feet, you went to the radius one. That's, and that's on the applications.
Okay, so we are changing the 200-foot rule, going from-
What, what we're changing-
Primary frontage street to more or less a-
Well, even more than that. Which, well, in two, in December of 2016, the planning commission was asked by the city council because of all of the noise that was made giving out new conditional uses, to redefine it, change it, make it, I was under the impression to make it harder. So what they came up with is that we will not grant, without a variance, any new conditional use, doesn't matter if it's a massage parlor, B and B, um, tour, or, not tourist lodging, a tour home, a daycare, within 200 feet of any existing CUP or grandfather. That's what's changing on this.
Of any kind.
Of any kind. And it was meant to tighten up giving out CUPs. That's what we, I felt we were instructed to do, weren't you, Ann?
Well, when I came on, yeah.
Mr. Ann?
Yes, Ms. Kendrick?
Um, I would like to make a motion to amend this ordinance, to delete, um, the portion of section two, beginning at the number four, existing tourist lodgings, and the remainder of that section one. So that section one will then only amend paragraph C1 and C4 as is described in this, um, ordinance.
I'm sorry, I don't understand, I'm trying to follow along with you.
Okay, I will repeat it.
Section two has no relevance to section one, it's a formality with all-
I'm not talking about section two.
Well, you said section two.
I'm talking about section, I am making a motion that we amend section one at the point, to remove all language between four existing tourist lodgings may not expand, et cetera, to the end of that section one, which ends, and register, establish, well, that was taken out.
Okay.
And shall occupy the premises.
So, it would only, only the first item would be addressed?
Correct. That is my motion.
All right. Do I have a second?
I'm lost.
I, I'll second that for discussion.
Okay. Ms. Green?
So would number four, existing tourist lodgings...
No, number four is deleted.
Yeah, but she would, would that be, Christie, would you want that added to another ordinance?
Uh...
Is that what you're asking?
I don't want, I personally do not want another ordinance on the tour homes. If, if you want to add another ordinance concerning, um, the residents, that's fine. But at this point, I just want to consider an ordinance that simply addresses the 200-foot rule. Period. The end.
And Ms. McClung?
You know, I've been associated with this for a long time, planning commission and city council. I have never known any, any CUP offered, available to anybody that was as close as 50-foot. So I don't know what you were stating. You were saying, well, I don't know what the hell you meant by that, quite frankly.
Well, okay, we had, on Elk Street, the same and similar. Remember tourist lodging, B&amp;B? And for, a residence had been set for 15 years, that they weren't, they weren't accounting them.
That, that, I believe that that particular instance, that was erroneously given.
And what about, like, up on Summit and, and Washington? All of those are within 50 feet of each other.
Point of order. May I ask for a second of my, to my motion?
Oh. Did we get a second? You're right.
Not that I, oh, Melissa.
Yeah, Melissa's second.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed, I apologize. I'm sorry.
Some of those are C3 up there. You know, those, then if, if they're not, then they were, then they were grandfathered in before, because...
Not on Summit, 50 Joe, Washington, that is not C3. Why is C3?
That's when they made the rule up, I think, too, because of that whole string of...
But we just gave...
Now, let's, okay.
The 200-foot rule is in effect. I mean, if it, that's been there a long time. There hasn't been anything since that was put in effect, less than 200 feet. If it was, it was given erroneously, because it should not have been, because the 200-foot rule is there. Been there.
I don't have further discussion? Mickey?
This is ridiculous. In June of 2005, planning spoke to council and said, "Please leave our 200-foot rule alone. It is fine as it is." And it was basically, the street frontage is what was counted. My, and I have been on planning a couple of times where we have fought about the 200-foot rule. I have an acre of land, right here in the middle of town. My house is at the very front. If I want to do a CUP for whatever, and I have to go by the 200-foot boundary, I'm going to be interfering with Susan Hawn's domicile. From my, end of my acre, 200 feet is going to go up the hill, onto the historic loop, and be hitting all of those little places there. That's ridiculous. The 200-foot rule, as it used to be, made sense. You don't want to have three houses right next door to each other doing the same thing, presumably, although I happen to think it's really good to have good competition. But that was the point of it. But to make it boundaries is ridiculous. And for planning to tell council, June of 2005, "Leave it alone. We know what we're doing. We've got things working out fine." I think we need to go by that and drop the whole 200-foot change.
Okay. Further discussion? I guess we have a motion to delete, uh...
From four down?
From four down.
From, including number four?
All, all of four, all the way down to the top of the beginning of Section 2.
Okay.
So it deletes the...
So this is all going to be separate pages of stuff?
It remains to be seen. Right now, we're deleting it. So, any further discussion? All those in favor of deleting that section, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so moved. All right. Any other additions or deletions on this? I have a motion, then, to read ordinance 2270 by title only.
As amended?
As amended.
It's never been read the first time.
We've never read it or approved it. Correct.
Oh, it hadn't? Oh, okay. Then let's, do I get a motion to, to read ordinance number 2270?
So moved. Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
How many?
No.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, so we've got four ones.
Correct.
Can I ask a question before that vote is finally...
What?
Because I may change my vote.
You can't change it. You, we will vote again, so.
I can pull it back. Are we going to be adding these other things as separate units, or are they gone forever?
That's, that's not pertinent to this ordinance.
Yes, it is.
No, it's not.
Well, then, I'm changing my vote to no. If you can't tell me that we will pick these up on another section, then I don't want to get rid of them.
At this point, I think the vote stands. And as to whether they'll be picked up later, that is a separate issue, as the mayor says, unfortunately or fortunately, depending on your view. But, um, at this point, you are voting as amended.
If we are voting to amend it, you still have a choice to vote to approve it.
Well, I'm changing my vote to no.
No, you can't right now. I'm sorry. Go ahead and read the ordinance.
Ordinance number 2270, an ordinance amending Title 14 of the Eureka Springs Municipal Code regarding R1 Victorian Residential. Whereas the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs desires to amend Title 14 within the city, and whereas the City Planning Commission, after public hearing, has recommended the following change, now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, the Title 14 of the Municipal Code, the amended is followed, follows. Section 1, subsection 14.08.01, zoning district R1 Victorian Residential, restrictions. So it's zoning district, R1 Victorian Residential restrictions, and R1 Victorian Residential shall be amended as follows. Paragraph C1 shall be replaced by the following paragraph, singular. 1. No request for a new conditional use permit shall be granted of an existing conditional use permitted property or legal non-conforming permitted property is within 200 feet from all parcel boundaries of a new application. This restriction is not intended to, nor shall it apply, to any existing permitted conditional use activities where a permit is requested for an existing facility due to a change in ownership. Section 2. All provisions of the ordinances of the City of Eureka Springs in conflict with the provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed, and all other provisions of the ordinances of the City of Eureka Springs not in conflict with the provisions of this ordinance shall remain in full force and effect. Section 3. Separability. Should any sentence, paragraph, clause, phrase, or section of this ordinance be judged to be judged or held to be unconstitutional, illegal, or invalid, the same shall not affect the validity of this ordinance as a whole or any part of provision thereof, other than the part so decided to be invalid, illegal, or unconstitutional, and shall not affect the validity of the Eureka Springs Municipal Code as a whole.
I get a motion to approve ordinance 2270 on its first reading?
So moved.
Get a second?
Second.
Discussion?
I think I, I'm being told that I said something incorrectly. Could you tell me what that is, please?
I don't know which words you used, but that's the words you wanted.
Existing activity?
Yes.
And I said something incorrect? Okay.
All right, discussion? All those in favor of ordinance 2270 as amended, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Signify by saying no?
No.
Did someone make that motion?
Yes.
Who made that motion?
I, Christie.
If I did.
That was to read. Did you also make the motion to approve it?
Yeah. And I seconded it.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
Okay.
So it failed, correct?
Yep.
Okay, we're done.
We're done.
Thank you.
We're done. We're done with that one. Okay. That brings us to our next ordinance, though. Ordinance number 2271. Do you get a motion to discuss?
So moved. I'm back in.
I make a motion to read 2271 on its third reading.
Second.
Okay. Got a motion to discuss and read on second reading, or first reading?
Third reading.
Third reading?
Yep.
Okay, third reading.
By title only. Sorry.
All right. Any discussion? All right.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Kendrick?
Yes.
Five zero? Ordinance number 2271, an ordinance amending Title 14 of the Eureka Springs Municipal Code regarding C1, C2, and C3. Whereas the City Council of the City of Eureka...
By title, huh?
My part. Sorry. This is all getting...
Yes. I agree.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to approve ordinance number 2271 on its third reading.
Second.
Yeah. Tell me how we did that.
No, that was just read. Now it's approved.
Oh, okay.
It's a good thing we're all paying attention, huh?
Okay.
Okay, so, that's a roll call, and... Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Kendrick?
Yes.
Five zero?
Okay, makes that one good. All right. Get a motion to discuss 2272, amending planned unit development?
Motion to discuss. I make a motion to discuss ordinance number 2272.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
No.
All right, this, uh...
Oh, God.
Where are we on this one? Is this our first reading?
Well, yes, we haven't approved yet.
No, this was when we had the amendment and stuff.
Planings, changes.
Yes, changes. But it's still our first reading, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
It's never been read through all the way?
All right, well, since it hadn't been all read through, we can read it as, as it is. All right, we got a motion to...
We have a motion to discuss.
Okay. Ms. Snyder?
Ann? Okay, I'm going to assume, because it's gotten so, been so long, I've gotten so confused, on this one, where you have blacked out the two choices that we had, are those going to show up somewhere else at some time?
Eliminated.
No. Or is it strictly just this paragraph E?
They'll show up somewhere. Those paragraphs are in this code.
Okay.
But I think at the last city council meeting, it was discussed that we think that maybe they weren't supposed to be.
Okay.
So we're only doing the planned unit development today.
Okay, so these things are simply not going to be existing anywhere at all, having to do with... Okay.
You are correct.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay. Yes.
I'm sorry, yeah. And I, and I know I mentioned something last time. This is an awful lot of money that an applicant has to put out. If, well, go ahead and snicker, but this is a lot of money. And I know it didn't used to totally be that way. What is the recourse if the commission just doesn't like them, so they say no?
Non-refundable. Means they don't get their money back.
I know. But is there no, is there no coverage, protection, whatever? I mean, what...
Non-refundable means non-refundable.
Okay, all kinds of, like, tree cuts and stuff. Okay, all these things have to be approved. Do these things need to be approved before they come up with this and go to planning? No. So in other words, if they spend all this money, and then they find out that they're not going to be allowed to cut some trees, what happens? Are they just out that money? Or were they supposed to have had this tree cut checked first?
That's a separate issue, actually.
No, it's not.
Ms. Green?
Mickey, the reason I snickered is, on all our applications, there is a fee for something. If, to me, if someone's going to be doing a planned unit development, they probably have a lot of money, and $100 is a whole lot.
Oh, it's a lot more than that, but...
Well, I, for them, it wouldn't be. But on every, your CUPs, every one of them, it's $100 fee.
Right. But my question is, because there's a whole lot more they have to do now than they used to. If there is going to be a tree cut involved, do they get all of that approved before they go to planning? Or do they do planning first and then have to go and get approved for a tree cut? If it says, no, the tree cut, they're out the money?
If they're smart, they'll do the application all at the same time.
Well, that's, that's what I'm asking. Is there any steps, guidelines written out or whatever, saying, you know, you need to have all these things checked into...
The people who do these, the engineers usually know how to process and...
Well, I'm asking because this is one of those things that I've been getting questions about. So that's why I was trying to get this verified. You know, the order itself is supposed to be done.
Well, this doesn't address any orders. This addresses the planned unit development.
Okay.
Any further comments? Mr. McClung?
I'd like to make a motion that we read ordinance number 2272 for its first reading, excluding all that that is blacked out.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Ordinance 2272, an ordinance amending Title 14 of the Eureka Springs Municipal Code Regarding Planned Unit Development. Whereas the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs desires to amend Title 14 within the city, and whereas the City Planning Commission, after public hearing, has recommended the following change. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, the Title 14 of the Municipal Code shall be, shall be, be amended as follows. Section 1, subsection 14.08.03, use conditions and exceptions. Paragraph E. Planned unit developments shall have the following language added. The applicant must pay a non-refundable processing fee of $100. That was number five. Number six, public hearing. The planning commission shall schedule a public hearing on the application. The applicant shall follow the following procedure for giving notice for this public hearing. A, there shall be a public notice of the hearing, published at least once in a newspaper of general circulation in the city at least 10 days before the hearing, which notice sets forth the time and place of such hearing and the address of the proposed planned unit development. Responsibility and cost of the public notice shall be borne by the party making the proposal. The applicant shall notify all adjacent property owners within 200 feet of the property lines in every direction by certified mail. Return receipt requested at least 10 days prior to the public hearing. Return receipt requested at least 10 days prior to the public hearing. C, all return receipts and a copy of the letter with an affidavit of publication from the publisher shall be furnished to the Planning Commission before the public hearing. And D, the applicant shall post at least one or more conspicuous signs on the property at least 10 days prior to said hearing. Signs shall be provided by the city and shall note the time and date of the public hearing. Section 2, all provisions of the ordinances of the City of Eureka Springs in conflict with the provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed, and all other provisions of the ordinances of the City of Eureka Springs not in conflict with the provisions of this ordinance shall remain in full force and effect. Section 3, severability. Should any sentence, paragraph, clause, phrase, or section of this ordinance be adjudged or held to be unconstitutional, illegal, or invalid, the same shall not affect the validity of this ordinance as a whole or any part of provision thereof, other than the part so decided to be invalid, illegal, or unconstitutional, and shall not affect the validity of the Eureka Springs Municipal Code as a whole.
All right. Get a motion to approve 22, ordinance 2272 on its first reading?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so moved. All right. Fifth ordinance. From Planning Regarding R2 Contemporary Residential...
Motion to discuss.
Get a second?
Second.
All right, this is Mr., Ms. Kendrick's?
Um, I object to this ordinance on the same basis as I objected to ordinance number 2270. More than one subject is addressed. Tour homes are added as another conditional use in residential neighborhoods, and there also is the same defect in the use of Occupy in defining bed and breakfasts. Therefore, I am going to vote against this ordinance.
Ms. McLennan?
I have one question. Isn't tourist lodging, isn't that restricted to just one unit per structure anyway? Isn't that the way it always was, or it's not?
Ms. Green?
Carrie, we do have some CUPs that are for, like, two tourist lodgings, three tourist lodgings, and we had a case of where there was one. You could have up to five, and they tried to expand it to six. So since tourist lodging is not a permitted use since 2001, we decided to stop allowing any expansions of them. That's all that is. It would be like if you, you had a tourist lodging for one unit, and somehow or another you decided to divide the place in half and make two tourist lodgings. We're just, they didn't want to do that. They were not going to give out any more tourist lodging.
Yeah, no, I just, I just don't recall anything.
In R1.
I don't. In R1.
Ms. Snyder?
Looking at these side by side, why do we even have this second one? It's missing one little part of the wise, it's the same stuff. The new bed and breakfast thing and the existing tourist lodging, both of those are exactly as they were in 2270.
Yeah, but we got rid of those.
Well, we did now, but this is already out.
Which one are you referring to? The ones that we got deferred?
The one we're looking at right now.
No number.
Has the same stuff as what we already had in 2270.
Different, one with zoning R1, one's R2.
Oh, okay. Well, since we took it out of the other one, can we use this to cover both? R1 and 2?
Could you be more specific?
Okay, well, since this is all the same wording, but removed, so we'd only have one item at a time. If we use this and change the name to say R1 and R2, and take out the existing tourist lodging for another thing, can we use this? And so having to come up with a whole new deal, we'd already have it here. Just make this R1 and 2.
Are you saying to use ordinance...
I'm saying use subsection D.
Why did you vote for it in the first place?
2270 failed.
Yeah, if you voted against it in the first place, what?
Oh, I forgot.
What are you doing?
I forgot. It's been too long, okay? Sorry.
All right. Does anybody want to make a motion to amend this ordinance?
Amended? For what?
It's not even been given a number yet.
Well, I know, but so before we...
I move to give...
Well, okay, give it a number.
I move to give the ordinance a number and read it.
Get a second? Not hearing a second?
It's gone.
Okay. Any other, any other motions on this ordinance?
Do we give it back to Planning?
Okay, the motion, the ordinance lacks a second.
Correct.
All right, so that's, that was our fifth ordinance. Yes, Ms. Snyder?
Do we need to give this back to Planning in regards, I mean, they obviously have it for a reason.
Well, one, it was R1 and R2.
So what I'm saying is, we need to send this back to Planning so they can make R1 and 2 on the bed and breakfast period. They obviously have a need for this.
Well, at that point, I think that the council decided that since that failed, that this one, this one failed also, then there's no need for it. Ms. Green?
You know, I'm finally going to agree with Mickey. Maybe we should have a workshop on this and see if we can kind of make something out of all of this.
And maybe, and maybe it's a dead horse, and we need to leave him. Let it go. You know, let Planning Commission do something that, where they can invest their time in the something and be positive, and, you know, let the dead horse die.
All right. I bring this up to Ms. Kendrick and Mr. Thomas, wanted discussion of the Public Works budget?
Excuse me?
You've got the auditorium.
You've got the auditorium.
Thought that was deferred.
No, the quitclaim deeds were deferred.
On auditorium remodel, August 13th?
Oh.
Am I missing something?
Okay. No, we are.
Okay, so that's been deferred.
Thank you.
All right. Discussion of adjusting Public Works budget?
So moved.
Second.
Or discussion, move, that we discuss adjusting the Public Works budget.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I, the reason this is on the agenda is because I believe all of the council received a letter that was addressed to the mayor. It was dated June 25th from Duane Allen of Public Works, asking the mayor to adjust his, his budget because he thinks that there can be upgrades made to the, I'm sorry, I hadn't read this in a couple weeks, but the wastewater facility by, for example, adding a software update, and, and also he would like to have a water leak audit. And so I would like to discuss whether we think that that's appropriate.
Ms. McLennan?
Yeah, I think that Lonnie referred earlier in our budget meeting about that we would have a, he's meeting with the department heads, and we're getting ready for mid-year budget review, and my guess is that that will probably all be addressed in that budget review, I would think. If, if, if he's not paying attention to that at Public Works, if Duane's not, then he's overlooking something big, so I think it will come out, it should.
Mr. Clark? I think a lot of this had to do with us going ahead and approving some of the things that Duane was wanting to do, I believe. That was within the budget, but it hadn't been revised yet.
Well, I have not had the meeting with Mr. Allen at this time. That's scheduled for the 31st. But the mayor's budget, I know that he and Mr. Allen have discussed, and I've been in on some of it in detail, many of these things, and those recommendations with the mayor's approval will be presented to you all in the six-month budget adjustments. And, and I think they're looking at a very comprehensive revision of some of those things that Mr. Allen has suggested in that letter, and so I think you will be pleasantly surprised, maybe not surprised, but you will approve those whenever it comes time for the budget adjustments. And we would like to make this all encompassing, because when the mayor makes the recommendation, then it comes before you all for approval, of course. Mr. Mayor, is that...
Ms. Kendrick?
My only comment is that, of course, the sooner we do a water audit, the sooner we locate our water loss, and the sooner we reduce our losses. And my question would be, are we remiss by waiting to, to, to make these changes until we make all the other changes? I mean, are we, does this unnecessarily, the process that you're describing, does it unnecessarily delay our going forward with what could be a great cost-saving?
I believe, Ms. Kendrick's, if I'm not mistaken, unfortunately, I don't believe you were at the meeting when we discussed this.
Oh.
And we talked about allowing me to go ahead, and we are in the process now of getting bids from companies to do the water.
I'm sorry.
And we're proceeding on with this on the basis that I have the authority to do that, and then we come back and adjust the budget with the Public Works and the council through there. We made the presentation so the council would know what was going on in this area. So, final approval, of course, with mid-year budget adjustment will be with the council, but that's not stopping us from proceeding, although we can't, now is the time, and you're absolutely correct, to go ahead and start locating those leaks. And then during this, this winter, we can start taking care of it.
Good, good. I'm sorry I missed that meeting.
But that's kind of where we are. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? All right. Then that gets us down to, as I mentioned, we get a motion to discuss vacancy in the council.
So moved.
Get a second? As noted, and I believe all the council members received David Mitchell's letter of resignation, so at this point in time, we need a motion to accept his resignation and to declare a vacancy.
So moved.
Second.
So, Mickey?
Do we have to declare a vacancy right now, or can we just accept the resignation right now?
I think we have to accept the resignation and declare the vacancy right now, don't we, Mr. Weaver? We don't have to proceed any farther tonight, it's basically declaring the vacancy.
My reading in the state statute says that, yes, the vacancy should be declared, and at the next meeting, then, in appropriate time, the council can address replacement.
So, Mr. McLennan?
Mr. Weaver, is replacement required? Can, can it be deferred till the next election?
It appears from the language I read that it would require setting someone.
It does.
It's not been tested by a court that I'm aware of. This is the new language that was put in there this last time.
Ms. Kendrick's?
I would point the council to the last sentence of the, of the email that was in our package, that stated that a successor shall be chosen by a majority vote of the members of council.
We won't have to have the election tonight, we just need to declare the vacancy.
Shall proceed?
I'd just like to ask, are you referring to the part of state law that says proceed to elect?
The term shall.
Shall proceed to elect? Does proceed mean has to do it immediately, or does it mean develop a timeline? Isn't that proceeding?
I would believe that if your timeline is to involve four months of not appointing anyone or not filling the seat, that that would be looked on unkindly by a court of competent jurisdiction. That would be delayed beyond what they would probably stomach. And shall tells you, this is not something to necessarily try to create your own rules on, but if we're... If you have a vote, and it turns out that you cannot get a majority for any one candidate, then you may have to have another vote another week or another time. But if you have candidates at the next meeting that are put forth by council members, you need to take a vote next week.
But we have no process for getting those names. I mean...
Can we establish a timeline of, to have all interested citizens submit their notice by a certain time?
To the clerk's office. I think we've done that in the past, and also designated someone or multiple parties that they can present that to. I think the last time there was a vacancy, if I remember correctly, they allowed the candidates till the next setting of the agenda, I believe, but I may be wrong. But they were to notify, I believe, your office or the city clerk's office in that time span.
All right, Ms. Snyder?
All we have to do today is declare a vacancy. At the next meeting, we can sit there and have people volunteer for the five-month position. We can announce that tonight. We can discuss at the next meeting the various options we have in filling the seat. We can actually kind of work on this for quite a while if we want to. That is, that is the delaying option. Now, what I would rather see is, it had been originally suggested that the people running for seat two of Ward 1, that we should be choosing from them to fill this seat. I am 1,000% against that because it is extremely unfair to everybody else running. So if you have three people running, and this council on their own appoints one person, the other two may as well give it up because that is political reaction to a seated person. They already know what's going on, they're up to date, we don't have to start over, we'll just go ahead and put them in. That's the attitude. What I would really like to see, and I spent three hours walking my neighborhood, that one little street last night, talking to all my neighbors about it, and what they have come up with, and I was so thrilled to see it actually verified in the paper, but I finally got to read last night at 10:00 PM. What they thought would be really, really awesome is if we would get someone like Ken did earlier tonight, throw their hat in the ring for this five-month period, who will guarantee in writing, however we need to put it, that they are not going to... guarantee in writing, however we need to put it, that they are not going to run in November. This way, we have a seated person's. Huh?
I don't plan on running in.
Okay, see?
And there were no others.
No, that's all right. We can't hear.
Anyway, so point being, this way, we would have a person who's interested in dealing with.
My point, oh, wait a minute, Mayor.
In council.
What's your point?
And that has absolutely nothing to do with anybody running in the seat.
Ms. Snyder.
It would be fair.
Ms. Snyder, hold on just a moment. Mr. Thomas?
I think we have, our business right now is to declare the vacancy, and if we want to discuss process for filling that vacant spot, we should add that to the agenda for the next meeting.
Well, we need to let people know that you can throw your hat in. That's what I'm doing.
Mr. Thomas is correct.
Sign up.
All right, we've got, we've got a motion on the floor. It's a further discussion.
I move that we declare a vacancy.
Yeah, I think we've already got the, do we have that motion?
What's the motion?
Don't we have, somebody make a motion?
You basically made the motion and Terry said, "So moved."
And I believe I seconded.
Yes, I believe you did.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. There's a vacancy in David Mitchell's position, which is, I don't know which ward.
Ward 1. Position 2.
Position 2. All right. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor of declaring the vacancy signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so moved. All right, that brings us up to the next item. Motion to discuss for mayor pro temp.
So moved.
Election of. Get a second.
I'll second that.
All right. Mr. Thomas?
Pointing to mayor pro temp is something that we do at the very first meeting every year when we start out. So evidently that position is important. And so I think that we do need to fill it. I have not been able to talk with anybody here at the table, but I would nominate Mr. McClung as mayor pro temp.
I'd second that. If he's interested.
What else I got there? This can go anywhere.
I'd like to say nominations, seats, pointing, but all those in favor, singify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Mr. McClung.
Thank you.
Mr. McClung, did you vote for?
Yes, I did.
All right, I got laid, Mr. McClung, you can take over. Uh, we got a CAPC, Mr. Mitchell was also in charge on the CAPC. And I'm not sure we need to do that now or we can wait, but.
Yes.
Okay, motion to discuss?
So moved.
Are we going to raise hands to be recognized or not?
Make up your mind.
You want to second that?
No, I was going to make the motion, but you didn't recognize anybody with a hand up.
All right, I have a motion. Do we want to second? Okay. All right, Ms. Snyder?
I would like to, or she will do it, nominate Melissa to take over the CAPC for the next few months.
I would do it.
Second.
Okay, discussion? All right, all those in favor of Ms. Green taking over the CAPC position? Singify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No. No.
Three, two.
Okay.
I think it passes because it's majority.
No. No.
Nope.
All right, any other discussion, motion? Okay, we can defer this until later on. Ms. Green? I mean, Ms. Snyder?
Well, since they don't want Melissa, would Bob be interested?
I would do it. I just knocked off my hearing aid. Yes, I would be interested.
All right, then I will nominate Bob Thomas to take over CAPC.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, singify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, congratulations, Mr. Thomas.
Glad to.
Okay. Uh, that brings us, I think, down to the final agenda sitting. Yes, ma'am?
I would like to add, it's title number six, 604 on dogs on the kenneling. I had another incident today that I had to report to our animal control, and I would like to have discussion.
What are you, what are you asking for?
Well, just the discussion of 604, which is on dogs. In there, there is a description of enclosures, and the one today that I gave Jimmy did not meet the enclosures, but putting animals in a vacant house and leaving them there.
All right, that's all right.
What's 604?
Um, it's the animal ordinance.
It's an, it's an ordinance number?
Yes.
Okay.
It's not an ordinance number, it's a section number.
Chapter and section.
I'm sorry.
In the code book, section 604 in code.
Uh, under what chap, or what title is that?
Um, semi, section six.
It's in code, in chapter six, section four.
Okay.
All right. Got a motion, get a second?
Oh, I'll second that.
Okay. Anything else?
Process for selecting a new councilperson or replacing the, filling the empty seat.
I'll second that.
All right. Anything else? Yes.
I think we should have.
Ms. Snyder?
I think we should have a discussion on procedures yet again, and that we should limit all planning ordinances to one meeting.
Procedures on.
Proper procedures. Are we going to raise hands and be recognized? We going to shout?
I apologize for not recognizing you.
Well, yeah, they're getting worse again.
Do you want to make a motion for, you have something for the agenda?
Adding procedures, she has, we just need a second.
Anybody second?
Of course not. Everybody just wants to shout.
Okay. If there's nothing else, saying nothing. Mr. McClung, you want to comment?
Glad to be here.
Okay. Ms. Kendrick?
I have no comments.
Mr. Thomas?
Nope.
Ms. Snyder?
Don't forget the vintage Charlie thing on Saturday at Pine Mountain. It's going to be awesome.
And Ms. Green?
No.
All right. Um, somewhere, I thought I had a sign.
Yeah. Here it is.
Oh, yes, here we go. I'm real excited over this one. Uh, maybe nobody else is. Coming soon, we, our parking meters will be changed to a, where you can download and go to passport parking. So from your smartphone, you can now dial up any parking meters. We're not having to change any of our parking meters. We can use our existing meters. They will still accept coins, but you just dial up this, and download this app. I discovered this in a little town outside of Gettysburg, Virginia, Sharpsburg, town of about 2,000 people. And I thought it was so neat because it didn't cost the city anything, and I could dial up and get 30 minutes, 15 minutes, 30, an hour, four hours, whatever. And then it notified me within two minutes or five minutes when my time was going to expire, so I could be sitting in a restaurant, and I'll get a buzz, and then I can click on and say, "I need another 15 minutes or another hour." And I don't have to worry about getting a ticket. The police will be able to monitor this with their smartphones. And so they can go in and do this, and it will do it by your license plate number. So I'm real excited. I think we're finally getting into something with our parking that is going to be going good. This will be on all city metered lots, and there'll be a little decal on the, on the meters for the people. And so anyway, this is, we're hoping, we've been going through a training process with the, with the police and our finance and bookkeeping and how this is all working. And so we're hoping probably within the next week to 10 days, we'll be having this up and running. And you'll see it because all of a sudden there'll be a decal on it. There's other advantages, too. Merchants and bed and breakfast people can also buy time and give it to their, their customers if they want. As, you know, if they want to go downtown and say, "Here, you know, put your, you know, give me your parking meter and here's your code to enter into it," and you'll get 30 minutes free parking. So it's exciting. I'm, I'm excited about this coming in. So hopefully we'll be coming in real soon with this. And it's easy to use. I mean, I could even do it, which was, I was impressed. So on July 28th, Dancing in the Park, 3:00 to 5:00 PM at Basin Park. July 28th, we'll also have our vintage motorcycle show from 9:00 to 5:00 out at Pine Mountain Village. And August 3rd through August the 5th, Summer Diversity Weekend. And you need to go to the Out in Eureka on Facebook for a full schedule. But the headliner is, is Dale Shores, is having a play called Six Characters in Search of a Play here at the auditorium. He's got a couple of Facebook items, or you can go online and see some, some of his work, and he's hilarious. He's a comedian, and so this should be a real good, a lot of fun. Also on the 3rd and 4th of August is our favorite Yards and Yards and Yards of Yard Sales from 8:00 to 5:00 all over town. So be sure to get your permits from the city if you're going to plan on doing one.
Commerce, Chamber of Commerce.
Chamber of Commerce, I'm sorry. Not the City Chamber of Commerce. August the 4th, Drumming in the Park, 6:00 PM. And then on the, August the 10th through the 12th will be the Eureka, which will be all, all day and in various locations. And that's all I have for right now.
What about the parade for the Harley thing?
The what?
The parade that Harley's going to be having, the vintage motorcycle.
I don't know anything about the parade.
Okay, after 4:00 will be a vintage motorcycle parade.
Okay, I'm not aware of any parade.
Is it permitted?
Oh, okay.
Well, they don't have a permit yet, so.
I don't know. I know they have a plan.
Motion to adjourn. Second? Get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, thank you all.